Okay, good evening and welcome to the October seventh, two thousand and twenty-one West Sacramento Planning Commission meeting. We continue to meet via teleconference pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty, by which members of the Planning Commission and staff are participating via live video conference to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. Members of the public have been invited to watch the meeting via wave cable on our local channel twenty, streaming online through the city's website or through the Zoom platform. Tonight's agenda and all agenda item materials are available on the city's website on the Planning Commission page. All public comments submitted by five P M via email to the Planning Commission clerk are available for consideration and are posted on the city website, along with the agenda and link to the live streaming video of this meeting, so that all commissioners and community members can see the complete text and submittal information. Members of the public joining via Zoom may also make oral comments. The Planning Commission clerk will note the commenters for each item. With that, we will proceed with tonight's agenda. First up is General Administration section. One A Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda Within the Jurisdiction of the Commission. Do you have any items for that one?
I don't believe so, Chair.
Okay, item one B Correspondence and Staff Communications from the Planning Commission Secretary.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Briefly tonight, you should have received a memo from Justin Hardy regarding the Dutch Brothers item on your agenda tonight, so we will discuss that further when we get to that particular item. And then, second of all, second of all, I would, you may have seen a new fit, see a new name on our meeting tonight, so I would like to introduce Tanya Flores to all of you. She is our planning technician, been with us about two months now. So she will be running the meetings, helping get to your packets, all the, and helping me, you know, help orchestrate the meetings and support the, all the planning commissioners. So she's been doing a great job already, so please welcome her and you'll be likely hearing from her frequently. And then I'd also like to thank Warilla Desma from the City Clerk's Office, who's also helping orchestrate the meeting tonight, running the Zoom in the background. So with that, that's all my correspondence at this time.
Thank you. Welcome, Tanya. Welcome to the Commission. Well, maybe meet you sometime in person. I guess we still all haven't met in person yet.
Yes, hopefully. I look forward to working with all of you.
And we'll move to item one C Disclosure of Ex parte Communications. Any planning commissioners that have ex parte communications to disclose should do that at this time. Not seeing any hands. So that will move to the Consent Agenda. Item two, Consideration and Reassurable of the Minutes from the August fifth, two thousand and twenty-one Commission Meeting. Commissioner Lockhart?
I'm moved.
A motion from Commissioner Lockhart.
A second?
Second, Vice Chair Berliner. Ms. Flores, can you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Deanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Stinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Berliner?
Aye.
Commissioner Escobar?
Aye.
Commissioner Lockhart?
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Chair Sabon?
Aye.
With that motion passes, so we'll move to the regular agenda. Item three, Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Conditional Use Permit and Design Review for Proposed Dutch Brothers Drive-Thru Restaurant at seven sixty-four IKEA Court. This is Mr. Hardy and this is the item we received the memo on earlier today.
Correct. All right, Chair and members of the Commission, yes, before you is the use permit for a Dutch Brothers drive-through. The project is located within the River Point Marketplace, the regional shopping center that was designed to accommodate destination shopping and regional shopping needs. Center also has specific design guidelines, also known as PD forty-five, which staff has reviewed the project and conditioned the project based upon the design requirements of that center and for the proposal with the conditions, we believe the design meets the intent of the design review. Before the commission tonight is specifically the drive-through components, and they are proposing a dual-drive-through system, which a newer design of theirs also includes the escape lane to allow people that need to exit the facility quicker or have received their drinks, as I understand it, instead of waiting in the queue, sort of a bypass lane. We worked primarily with the applicant as the main issue with the use permit and a drive-through is traffic-related. So development engineering and the applicant and staff worked together to design and come up with a focused traffic study, which resulted in a, in your attachment five. And the review, we wanted to make sure that IKEA Court, the intersection of IKEA Court and entrance to the facility with the Taco Bell, Firestone, Five Guys wouldn't be negatively impacted. The regional center was designed for retail assortments, restaurants, large retailers, and including drive-through businesses. Those were all anticipated with the original design of this regional shopping center to handle the capacity for such businesses. However, in reviewing the specific project, we wanted to verify and make sure that the internal circulation within the parking lots would negatively affect adjacent businesses from being accessed, emergency services, if they needed to render any kind of service to any of the facilities. So in the attachment five of the focused traffic study, there were two recommendations for mitigations that in the event that eleven cars were reached and a staff member of Dutch Brothers would then cordon off with cones sort of towards the, in front of the Firestone building next to the off-ramp and basically loop cars around within the internal circulation, the existing parking lot, allowing any drive access in front of Dutch Brothers and then to Firestone. And it wouldn't impact the intersection going over towards Five Guys, Taco Bell, and In-N-Out. Those were the main mitigations that were as a result of that focused traffic study, and those have been incorporated as conditions, and the applicant has understood those. Their design of their plan accommodates that. So they sort of have three options and they can extend those mitigations further if needed on extremely heavy busy days that, on a couple of occasions, I've gone out there and there's an ample parking, even with existing businesses there. Earlier today, the applicant stated they are an objection to installing EV charging station. It's section seventeen, two-seven, oh-nine-oh D, applies to anytime you modify a parking lot, which this application is doing with their trash enclosure and a human path towards that. This is not a requirement of the use permit specifically. This would be any improvement at that site that we're modifying the parking lot. This condition would be applicable even if they were straight to building rent. So if they eliminated the use permit application and just went with their building, trash enclosures or any commodification, that section would still apply. The staff has reviewed the requirement and believe it is in compliance with the modification and recommend that that condition stay intact. The site is located in a commercial zone as well as the entire regional center. It's compatible otherwise with the zone that allows restaurants, other uses oriented to highway, traffic and through traffic and ancillary to the existing businesses that serve the marketplace center. The memo tonight that I provided to you earlier, the applicant objected to condition three, no doubt daylighting of any rooftop drainage, essentially meaning that downspouts would come off any rooftop of the building and would then run over any impervious surface pavement, concrete to a storm drain or planter bed of some kind. In talking with development engineering, they were fine with the way the condition is modified, that simply states that rooftop drainage would be pre-treated in order to enter the storm drain system, which is in our standard. That was provided in the memo. The applicant is on the horn. Answering any questions, I do have Candido from Development Engineering answering any questions on that's behalf. And I am available as well to answer any conditions or questions. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Before we hear from the applicant is, oh, Vice Chair Berliner.
Sorry, I heard charging stations, and so I know you all know that my ears and eyes just split up. So can you go over again whether or not they're going to install EV charging stations? Are they required to or expected to install EV charging stations?
So about five-thirty, the applicant emailed me stating that they feel that this condition does not apply to the project. I have spoken with David Tilly, the principal planner, with regards to the applicability of that requirement. They are modifying the parking lot with the trash enclosure. They are eliminating two spots. The parking lot is already there. This condition is aggressive, part of the Mayor's Climate Commission action, and if we only allow this to be applied to brand-new businesses, no headway will be made regards to, you know, climate action. So they are modifying the parking lot. We feel the condition does apply, one charging station. The building itself would require five parking stalls, but they are modifying the existing parking lot in order to do a trash closure.
Right, and that's similar to what happened with the Holiday Inn in West SAC where they were modifying parking spaces. And so as a result, they were expected and are putting in EV charging spaces there.
Yeah, that is correct. That is a provision we put into the zoning code because from a climate standpoint, moving in this direction, it can't be all just on new development. When retrofits go in, this needs to happen. And it also goes to some of the equity objectives we have in the general plan, whereas, you know, those persons who may have rental housing or other situations where they can't install chargers at their home, they're dependent upon public charging, and a lack of public charging is a real hindrance to EV adoption for many individuals who, for whatever reason, can't, don't have the, or live in an apartment or otherwise cannot install charging, you know, at their home. So this is a provision that's been in the zoning code since we rewrote it a few years ago. It applies to any parking lot of five spaces or more that's new or renovated.
I am, I am for it. I, okay, I just wanted to double check that EV charging. Awesome. Thank you.
Commissioner Deanda?
Sorry. Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I just want to be clear on that piece. So does that then mean that we're going to have to make? So they're saying they don't feel it applies to them. Are we going to have to address that specifically to move forward tonight?
In, in staff's estimation, this is an objective requirement in the zoning code. We daylighted it in this manner so that it doesn't become a plan check comment that would come in toward at the eleventh hour on a project. We recognize there is some expense to provide a charging station. So we wanted to daylight it early, but this would be applicable even if there were not a use permit for the drive-through pending before the planning mission.
So would, a couple of questions in. So putting in the station, the station is going to then be, the user would pay for the power, correct?
Yes.
And would the, would this station be required to be placed adjacent or around the, the building? Where does it go if they do that?
We'd like, we would need to cite it in a way where it would be most likely where it could be also be accessible to persons with disabilities. So we would need to work with our building division on the specific location for it. But we would want it to be as close proximity to this business as possible.
Because I'm just thinking, I mean, I, I don't have a lot of familiarity with this business, but it seems to be primarily drive-through driven, which is going to create additional traffic in that area, which can already be tight, given some of the other businesses and just the logistics of that space. And then you're going to put a station in there that's going to require someone to navigate all that, to try to park and charge. I
I mean, this would be something that would be available to the public. It would not be just for Dutch Brothers, you know, customers per se.
Sure, but if, I guess I'm getting at it's in that area, what's the ease of use if you're going to have to navigate the drive-through traffic to get to it in the first place? I don't know.
I believe the applicant will have some further commentary on this. We've been putting some stuff in the chat, so we'll need to wait until we open up the public hearing to hear those comments specifically.
Looks like, Mr. Hardy, did you want to say something on this? I think, I think you're on mute.
Sorry about that. In terms of location, there, there's a variety of locations that could be away from the, the parcel goes all the way to the off-ramp from the intersection. So locating the charging station could be accommodated outside of where any of the char, vehicle stacking would take place. So I, I, I feel that there's a way to navigate that to avoid having conflicts. That was one of the reasons why the trash enclosure was flipped to the other side is they want to run twenty-four-seven and refuse pickup needs to access that. And so we'll put it on the backside, outside of this vehicle stacking, again, provides ability without competing traffic flow. Or customers.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, not seeing any hands up. No. Oh, Commissioner Lockhart.
I couldn't quite tell from the map. Is the only way to enter the drive-through from IKEA Court? Or is there, will there be the ability to enter from Reed? I guess that would be Reed Avenue.
IKEA Court's only access point as well as the other businesses that are in there. And the two access points, one off of Harbor, one off of Reed, both were designed for the combination of the regional shopping center we call River Point Marketplace.
Thank you. The, the map kind of cut off right on the Reed Avenue side, so I couldn't quite, but thank you for clarifying.
Seeing any other hands. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Do, do we have any public comments for this item or is it just the applicant today?
Just the applicant.
All right, thank you. And is that Mr. Provost? Is that?
Yes, I'm here. Hello.
Whoever from, I've been working directly with Chandra, but she has a team here, so whoever would like to speak on behalf of the project.
Yeah, Chandra would be great. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'll try and make it brief. Justin did a really nice job describing the project and explaining it to you. We appreciate that. Um, we want to thank the Commission for taking the time to review this project. Dutch Bros is very excited to move into this community and is proud of the, the presentation that we have this evening. Want to thank planning and city staff for working diligently with us to present to you a package that we are proud of and that we feel exemplifies, you know, the direction that the city of West SAC is, is looking for. We, just to head off right away, the EV, EV charging station, so we don't have to worry about extending any effort there. We understand that that's the direction of a lot of cities and communities, and your plan is especially aggressive. And we, we think that's great and we don't have a problem moving forward there. Object was a strong word. We questioned whether that ordinance applied to this project, given that we weren't adding the five stalls. So understanding that that's the direction that you'd like to go, we're, we're fine and that, that objection is off the table, so don't worry about that. Um, we went through several iterations of the site plan and the elevations, and we're again proud of what we're presenting for you tonight. The elevations, as Justin said, we feel meet the, the plan development requirements here and the design guidelines. It's a bit off Dutch Bros' brand, but Dutch Bros is willing to kind of make those concessions to move forward with this project and this development. We're very excited to, to move into this development especially. We also had several iterations of the site plan, and we do feel that the site plan that we're presenting tonight is a, is an appropriate site plan and meets the requirements of, of what we would need to present for business such as this and, and a project such as this. We understand that queuing and traffic control and circulation is, is a big item of discussion here and something that needs to be looked at pretty closely. And we did work pretty, very closely with both planning and engineering to put together the traffic study that is, was shared with you tonight. In that study, it's noted that several Dutch Bros close to the area were targeted and viewed, and the largest during peak hour queue was fourteen vehicles. We're showing fifteen stacking vehicles in our plan. So we went a little bit over to make sure that that was sufficient. In addition, we have a traffic management plan that we've included in the traffic study that we worked with the city to, to agree upon, that's something the city was looking for and something that Dutch Bros was willing to implement in case we did have queuing that exceeded that fifteen vehicles. It's a, a traffic management plan that Dutch Bros has agreed to in writing and one that we actually implemented in other locations, and it's worked very successfully. So we, we, we think that this should alleviate some of the concerns that commission might have or that neighboring businesses might, might have. We do feel that we've addressed all, all of the issues that could come up here. We're definitely open to discussing that further. In addition, we looked very closely at the climate action plan for city of West Sacramento, which is also aggressive, which we also are impressed with, and made some concessions and considerations with our site plan, including landscape and replacing asphalt with concrete in the, the drive-through to reduce the heat island effect. So, and in addition, with the site plan, we do have a walk-up window in addition to the drive-through and outdoor seating and bicycle parking to support the pedestrian environment here as well. So to close, we appreciate your time tonight. Appreciate you considering this project and this application, and we look forward to your questions. On the call, we have our entire design team, our Dutch Bros team and the development team as well.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions? Not seeing, oh. Vice Chair.
Uh, thank you, Chandra. I just, I just wanted to say thank you to you and the team for specifically addressing the EV charging issue. I know that, um, just by word of mouth, everyone I've like heard or seen on, you know, the various community discussion groups and on Facebook, everyone is very excited that a Dutch Brothers is coming. And so, um, so yeah, I'm excited to see you guys come because it's, it's been a few years coming. I remember when there were rumors a year or so ago about Dutch Brothers opening up in Southport. So thank you so much and I'm really excited for this project.
Commissioner Escobar?
I just have to second that excitement. As a, a new mom to a six-week-old, I am living off of coffee and having one that is a drive-through, I think is necessary, but I really appreciate all the time and effort that you all have put together and communication with our, our commission team or planning team to, to make this possible.
Commissioner Stever?
Uh, yes, I couldn't agree more with what's been said so far. I think there's a lot of excitement in the community around this project. And I certainly thank you, Chandra, for kind of addressing the, the traffic plan, I think is, is probably, most of us can say we've had experience in trying to navigate through that part of the, the business center, and it can be a challenge somewhat during kind of those peak hours and sort of here that, that Dutch Brothers has this robust plan in place that has been implemented in other locations successfully. I think kind of alleviates those traffic control concerns that I had on this project. So thank you very much, and thank you to the city's team for, for putting together this plan. That is all.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Well, I just want to pile on with my fellow commissioners because I think it reflects what we've all heard in community discussions, being there is a lot of enthusiasm for Dutch Brothers to join the West Sacramento community. So I, I too am glad to see this project has put in the time to make sure that it gets its design right for the city of West Sacramento. Because the downside, of course, being something so popular as Dutch Brothers, is that sometimes there can be traffic concern. And I have seen firsthand, sometimes those lines back up at this location or at the upper location, but that doesn't seem to be an issue here with this, this design. After seeing the staff report and hearing from the applicant, it sounds like a lot of discussion has been made about how to manage that traffic flow. And so I really appreciate that collaboration that's been made. I appreciate the traffic management plan that's laid out in the staff report. And I also appreciate that this design is not going to be just car-only, as Chandra alluded. There'll be, the bicycle parking spot will be a pedestrian seating and a pedestrian walk-up window. And I think all of that combined with the electric vehicle charging station really makes this not just a car-centered, commuter-centered, people driving off freeway-centered Dutch Brothers location, but something that will be really incorporated into the surrounding community. Something where residents in the nearby brighter, broader neighborhoods want to bike or walk, they can to this location. If people want to charge an electric vehicle because they don't have one at home, they can at this location. And so I think this will be a really, really great community asset. So again, want to thank the applicant for collaborating with the city staff so closely on this project.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands. Seems we got a little into, little into deliberation, but we'll, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to for deliberation and discussion from the commission. I think most of the commissioners already made their comments. I, I don't know if anyone else has any other comments. But yeah, it does, this same staff worked closely with the applicant and lots of changes. Transportation was mentioned and the traffic and the heat island effect. The applicant was really cooperative with addressing all of, all of those concerns. Anyone want to make a motion on this?
I'm, I'll move staff's recommendation.
A, a motion from Vice Chair Berliner?
Vice Chair Berliner, would, would your motion include the change to the recommended condition referenced in Mr. Hardy's memo?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Lockhart.
I will second Vice Chair Berliner's motion.
Okay, second from Commissioner Lockhart. Ms. Flores, can you do the roll call vote, please?
Commissioner, um, sorry, Commissioner Steger.
Aye.
Commissioner Berliner.
Aye.
Commissioner Escaval.
Aye.
Commissioner Lockhart.
Aye.
Commissioner Deanda.
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Aye.
And Chair Sablon.
Aye. Thank you. With that, the motion passes and conditional use permit is approved. Good luck, Mr. Provost and your team. Thank you for working with staff so closely to address their concerns. We will move to item four. Public hearing regarding proposed municipal code amendment to Title 17 pertaining to emergency shelters. And this is Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Chair Sablon and members of the commission. Uh, this item is the proposed amendment to Title 17, the zoning ordinance pertaining to emergency shelter locations. Uh, prior to the zoning code updated 2019, uh, this item was in the zoning code. State law requires that there be at least one zoning designation per city where emergency shelters are allowed by right. And prior to 2019, that was the M1 zone. When we were doing our housing element update this year, just recently, the Department of Housing and Community Development on their final review of our housing element discovered the inconsistency that we do not currently have a by right designation in the city. Uh, when the zoning code was updated, this was inadvertently changed to make emergency shelters a conditional use in the M1 zone. And so to comply with state law, we're proposing this amendment to essentially put the designation back to the way it was prior to the zoning code update. I do want to note that at this point in time, no emergency shelters are proposed. And the, the one zone where it would be permitted by right would be the M1 zone. Uh, this concludes my presentation. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, should you have them. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Any questions from the commissioners? Not seeing any hands. Commissioner Lockhart.
Uh, thank you, Chair Sablon. My, my question is if, and thank you, Ms. Allen, for clarifying that there are no emergency shelters currently proposed, but I was wondering what the process is if there were one to, to be proposed because some of those areas are light industrial, but they're very close to residential areas. And I was just wondering what the public notification process would be.
Well, in the, the M1 zone, they would be permitted by right. And so because of that, there actually would be no noticing requirement required. They could actually proceed straight to the building permit phase with, with their plan. Uh, there are in the zoning code a whole section of provisions for what's required of an emergency shelter. Uh, section 17.30, uh, that lists all the things they have to do in terms of operating hours and check-in of, of people using it, et cetera, that they would have to comply with as well.
And, and Commissioner Lockhart to follow up on that, the most likely, you know, scenario against, this is all extremely hypothetical, would be that any type of facility would likely be done by the county. And so it would, you know, there would need to be funding and go through the board of supervisors. And so even if there would be the traditional use permit kind of process, uh, there still would likely be an extensive um, public, you know, process to actually conceive the idea of a shelter where it could go. The county may have, may, I might have to acquire land, you know, for it from one of these. So there would be quite a bit of opportunity for public participation, you know, in that scenario. This is, you know, this is an atypical kind of thing. It's, it's not like any other type of commercial type use that might be proposed by a private entity. Uh, you know, that, I think that would be the most likely scenario, um, should that ever, should that ever occur. Uh, which I'm not aware of there being any thoughts to do so by anyone at this point in time.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Tully. And thank you, Ms.
Thank you. Commissioner Hirsch.
Thank you, Chair Sablon. A, a question that just popped into my head. And so I apologize for for it just coming to my head, but I'm curious. From the reading of state law, it requires cities to make these emergency shelters a permitted use in at least one zoned area. But is there a reason the city chose light industrial instead of other zoned areas? Industrial doesn't to me seem like it's particularly friendly to human habitat. Or is this something that's common how other cities have also done it?
I would imagine that, that what we're looking here is probably more of the norm. Uh, we first put the emergency shelters in the light industrial district. Uh, think about two housing element cycles ago when this thing, when this first became a requirement. Uh, at that time, um, the city was looking at a property on F Street, just a few doors east of Jefferson to potentially have a shelter. This was probably at least five years ago now. And that's a, that's a light, you know, that's an M1 area also. But I think you, you made the, your point is well taken that if someone were trying to cite a, a shelter, uh, regardless of the zoning district, it needs to be in a place where it makes sense, you know, where it's accessible, uh, where services can be provided in a, in a manner, in a, you know, efficient manner and where it was not likely to be impactful on, you know, surrounding neighborhoods. So we have to have at least, this is all hypothetical tonight. We have to have at least one zoning district where they're permitted by right. Uh, but clearly in the real world, one would need to, if one were to ever happen, it would need to be cited in the location uh, that made sense and where a property was available. Uh, but that really was the origin of it because the city at one time was looking fairly closely at doing one on F Street. So I don't remember the exact address, uh, but it was on an M1 parcel in that time. I hope that helps answer your question.
That's, thank you, Mr. Tully.
Thank you. Ms. Commissioner Steger.
Hey, Chair Sablon. Uh, Mr. Tilly, thanks for, for providing that 17.30 standards for specific uses. That was very helpful. And I think um, without trying to kind of go down the, the gopher hole in terms of, of how these, these services or shelters are to be ran, um, with respect to this conversation and approving the ability for them to be, you know, zoned and so that the city is in alignment with state law. Is there, is there a, an opportunity for the city to amend 17.30 as, as we move forward to, you know, make changes to kind of better align with our needs and?
Well, it's, it's certainly possible. Uh, we offered that at the time under the expectation that we, we might actually be getting a shelter, you know, again, this is going back several years now. So, uh, we haven't really looked at it since because, you know, once that shelter concept sort of, you know, went, went by the wayside, uh, we sort of left, left that there. But we, we certainly could do that, um, if the need presented itself. That's fully within our discretion to do so.
Okay, thank you. I think that having the ability to, to amend that, I think, um, fix care of any other questions I have. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's, uh, Mr. Tilly just related to Commissioner Steger's question. Are there any state law requirements for those requirements or is that all, all up to the city?
Not aware if there's any specific state standards for operating such a facility. Uh, but we, we did want to have some things on the books. Uh, especially in case there, you know, it's, I guess it's theoretically possible that is some form of private entity uh, could elect to try to operate a, or try to establish, you know, an emergency shelter here. So knowing that, um, we did have to remove the, this full of discretionary, at least in one zoning district. We did want to have those objective criteria. And I think Mr. City Attorney wants to elaborate on that as well.
Um, I was then getting back to Commissioner Hirsch's question about where these shelters are typically permitted. And while, while we were talking, I looked up what the city of Sacramento permits and they primarily allow the shelters commercial and also light industrial and office zoning, just zoning districts. So this is fairly common way to have them located rather than in residential areas. That's all ahead.
Thank you.
Just again, for anyone who might be listening tonight, just want to again make it clear that there are no shelters imminent or, or even in the discussion stages that we are aware of. I imagine this could likely be a multi-year effort to secure funding, secure property, et cetera, to do a facility of this nature. This is, um, certainly would be an atypical type of development from a, you know, cost, cost standpoint. And this is certainly not a moneymaker, uh, you know, for anyone. So, uh, but it is, it is something we need to accommodate. And this is us sort of cleaning up a, as Kathy mentioned, an inadvertent error that we made when we rewrote the zoning code a few years back. And just the underlying purpose here is it's absolutely mission critical for us to, to keep our housing element compliant with state law. The one we, you know, just, just got approved by the council a few months back. And, um, now we'll be good with, with this change and assuming ultimate council action on it will be good on our housing element for another eight years. Uh, which is very important, um, for us as we continue to provide housing for persons of all income levels and needs in our community.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Tilly. I think that's really important for the public to hear all of that. The, I'm not sure if there are public comments on this, but I'll open the public hearing just in case. Ms. Flores, do we have any public comments on this item?
There are none. None.
Thank you. Closing the public hearing and bringing it back to the commissioners for deliberation or, and or motion. Commissioner Hirsch.
Thanks, Chair Sablon. Now, I'm, I'm glad to see the city acting proactively to make emergency shelters a permitted use. And I know aside from what Mr. Tilly has said, this is to comply with state housing law, the state housing elements. Uh, I think it's also the right thing to do. Now, when we have so many unhoused neighbors across the state, but also here in the city of West Sacramento, it's important that there are shelter options for them. And so even though there are no emergency shelters planned at this time, as, as Mr. Tilly has said, I think that one, by making this a permitted use, it will of course speed up the process if and when it's ever decided one is needed in our community. And I think that that will be a wonderful thing. And with that, when ready, I'm happy to move the staff's recommended act.
Thank you, Commissioner Hirsch. We have a motion to move staff recommendation.
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Steger. Ms. Flores, can you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Hirsch.
Aye.
Commercial, Commissioner Berliner.
Aye.
Commissioner Escaval.
Aye.
Commissioner Lockhart.
Aye.
Commissioner Deanda.
Aye.
Comis, Commissioner Steger.
Aye.
Chair Sablon.
Aye. Thank you. And with that, the motion passes and this will go to Commissioner, right, Mr. Tilly.
Yeah, we will proceed to city council, um, on this. Kathy, do we have the dates on that?
Uh, yes, it goes first reading, first meeting in November, second reading, second November meeting.
And then we're presuming the council approves it would be effective 30 days after the second reading. So that puts us at about mid-December. Uh, would be effective.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're moving to administration function, part two. Part A, any informal discussion?
Just like to let the commission know, we will be meeting on our next regular scheduled meeting in two weeks from tonight. Um, I know we've had a, a unusual lengthy break, um, but that's over now. So we will be meeting in two weeks. And I, I know Commissioner Berliner would be unavailable, but our, we will see our alternate, um, there that evening. And just as a side note, along the lines of the last item, we were, um, discussing the permanent supportive housing project on West Capitol Avenue in the 800, 1800 block, uh, which is nearing completion, um, received a relatively prestigious award from American Planning Association um, just this week on, on Wednesday. So we were excited to hear about that. Um, that was really the missing link in our housing strategy, you know, in our community. Um, for, this will be, you know, I encourage all commissioners to, um, try to, you know, learn more about it. Um, especially once it nears completion because, uh, we really think it is kind of a missing link for our, our community members who are unhoused, um, but are maybe not in the position to graduate into a even a, even an income restricted apartment. Um, this is a, you know, a step in the ladder to hopefully get back into, um, you know, productive society. So that was very cool to see. And Councilmember Roscoe was a big champion of that project, was on the call. Um, and everyone. And so that, that's a, a very cool project. And um, I'm really hoping that it makes a difference along the lines of what, like Commissioner Hirsch was saying about our previous item.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. No other discussion from commissioners. I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you all. Good night.
See you all.
Good night. Thanks.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.